Oh, thank you. Yeah. Number three.
Is that real?
Three.
Girl.
Yeah.
Go get the grants.
Are you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ready?
Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the Warwick County Commissioners Board meeting to order. Today is August eighth, 2022. Latest in the question.
Special Agents, to defy the United States of America into repugnance for such things, one nation, endowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is area plan.
We have a request to rezone. It's PCR twenty-two oh eight. My petitioner and owner is Macon Corporation by Daniel Ubler. The request is to rezone fifty-seven point two-two acres located on the south side of Oak Grove Road, twenty-five hundred feet west of the intersection formed by Oak Grove and Weathers Road from M two general industrial zoning to R one one-family zoning, Ohio Township, eighteen six and eight, completely legal, is on file. And this was advertised in the standard on June thirtieth of 2022. The APC gave a unanimous positive recommendation at their meeting on July eleventh of 2022. But we have received a request from Jim Morley, the engineer for this project on behalf of Danny Ubler, to table this for two weeks to your next regularly scheduled meetings.
I make a motion to table to August twenty-second meeting.
I'll second.
First and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Our next item would be street construction plans, PP twenty-two eleven, Stall Road Apartments, PUD. Petitioners Indiana Valley LLC by Mansor Khan, member, approximately nine point one-six-one acres on the south side of Stall Road, six hundred and sixty feet west of Stall Road and Fworth. It's part of lots twenty-seven, twenty-eight and Sweats subdivision, Ohio Township, twenty-six and nine, advertised in the standard July twenty-eighth of 2022. And the internal roadway is proposed to be a private roadway on this development.
Glenn Merritt with Cash Wagner. This is the same project that come before you Drainage Board. Don't want to have anything else to add. What was discussed earlier, like I said, it is a private road.
Technically, the street planes aren't in order yet. We're still waiting on traffic impact study results. And I was told, was it an email that came in, said it'd be another two to three weeks? It's what you said Friday?
Something like that. I don't know if there's a definitive timeframe. I know you mentioned two weeks. I mean.
Do so do we table to the twenty-second then or?
I guess I have one question. Can we do that? And if we know the traffic study is not going to get done in a week or week and a half, can we push it to a month? Or how's how's that need to work? And I would say we table the drainage till that twenty whatever this meeting.
There's a possibility it won't be done by the twenty-second.
I mean, we're not doing the traffic study as law and music, so it's out of my hands.
Yeah, it could be taken off if it's not ready and done. Or when we come back next time, we just say we're still waiting on it.
Table it again.
Table it again.
Okay. If we can do that, that's preferable.
Make a make a motion to table.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Our next item would be PP twenty-two twelve, Warp Research and Industrial Center, number one, PUD replat of lot four. Petitioner owner is Westfall Investments LLC by Carl Westfile, fall owner, two point five-three acres located on the north side of Van Road, seven hundred feet east of the intersection of Van and Prospect Drive, being lot four in Warp Research and Industrial Center, number one, Ohio Township, nineteen six and eight, advertised in the standard July twenty-eighth of 2022. They are requesting no improvements to Van Road. And the county engineer has signed off that this will be okay on their request.
Glenn Merritt with Cash Wagner. I don't have anything else to add. There's like there's no improvements on Van. It's the one that's got the existing acts, shared access with the property to the east that's already.
It's got a large commercial drive with tapers.
Yeah, you can good will make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Our last item is Harmony Hill subdivision, PP twenty-two thirteen. Petitioner and owner is Oakland Holdings LLC by Jordan Eigner, managing member, approximately one hundred and fifty-four point nine-four acres, located zero feet northeast of the intersection of Esq. Road and State Road sixty-one, Boom Township, ten, five and eight, complete legal on file. This was advertised in the standard July twenty-eighth of 2022. And they have also requested no improvements to Esq. or Wesley Road. And this has not been signed off on yet by the county engineer.
Jim Morley, junior, project engineer. This is the same project we've just here on Drainage Board on had the basin in the northwest and southwest corners. It's a normal regular subdivision, curving other streets, underground piping and side yard and rear yard swales. And then we have, we come out onto State Road sixty-one at the bottom, and we've applied for our end up permit on that. And I would think an approval would be subject to that end up permit being granted.
Eric, outside review, I talked about the possibility of double chip and seal the adjacent roadways. Was that discussed with the developer?
It was. I discussed that with Jordan Eigner, who's the developer of this property and or manager of the property of the LLC, I guess. And he, because all of our subdivisions, none of our lots are allowed to access those streets. He said that he it was, he did not want to be responsible for the adjoining county roads that his subdivision lots can't access.
But they all have access by the new road to Wesley to the north, correct?
Yes, in theory, people could go out the north onto Wesley Road as I look at the.
My issue would be dust control complaints. We're going to have some residents on that north end adjacent to the gravel roadways, and they'll also want to travel those gravel roadways at some point. But we'll get complaints about the dust and wanting some kind of dust control. And the county does a a prime and choke chip and seal for dust control. That's why I discussed that my recommendation would be to split the cost of the double chip and seal of Wesley and Esq. Roads. And that could be at such time that the north half of the subdivision is platted. I don't know what they plan on doing when they come in for secondaries. I suppose they're starting south.
They're starting south and working north, and so it could be a while before they're. I think it was the it was the belief of the developer that as this project moves forward, the tax dollars generated off of this project would provide enough.
Tax dollars don't pay for roads.
Sure. Sorry. Don't know enough about taxes, I guess, but just that that would, as they commute, as they contribute to the community, that that would occur.
Jim, I think these are all two and a half acre lots, right?
They are.
So I'm assuming they're probably going to be pretty nice homes. We know we're going to get phone calls.
Yeah, and I I get I get this. I get that. I do. I get the dust issue.
And typically, every subdivision we've done to date, like Fisherville Road, we requested that they pay half the cost of the double chip and seal. I believe when Polk Road, the subdivision out there went in, they paid half the cost of double chip and seal. And.
And so are you seeking? Because in our in our suburb, you mean, we didn't really necessarily flush that out all the way.
Right. It was to be discussed.
Yeah.
And that never happened, and we just got the request for no improvements back.
So are you seeking half of the chip and seal for?
That would be my recommendation.
For the road along the north side only? Because these are pretty deep lots.
No. Basically, the cost to do both half, half that cost to do both roadways, the double chip and seal for the county to do it, half that cost would be thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Thirty-nine thousand would be what? Half the cost would.
That's half the cost.
That would be the developers. It's, yeah, that's the developer.
Portion of that.
So the total cost is?
Fifty, fifty-seven lots? How many lots are there?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. My glasses on today.
So you're saying thirty-nine thousand would be the developer's cost, right, Bobby?
Yes, and the county's cost as well. What's thirty-nine thousand?
Thirty-nine thousand apiece. Okay.
And when would that have to be done?
That's still up for discussion on how the board wants to do it. I mean, basically, you would, if we're talking about a certain amount of lots before, they would have to submit their dollar amount for that.
If we're going to start from the south and work their way north, I'd be fine with.
Once they get over halfway.
Some sort of a line in the sand.
Then they would have to submit their thirty-nine thousand for the cost? That's up to the board.
So you're going to start the secondary, just doing the southern half of the lot of the.
I believe, yeah. I mean, it would make sense to start on the southern end because that's where the main access is. People are going to come, vast majority will come in off of sixty-one, so.
How many phases do you think the secondary is in?
I mean, I could tell you it's going to be based off of lot sales.
I mean, lots are in there, Jim.
Fifty-seven, I believe.
Yes, fifty-seven.
I thought it was more than that, sorry.
So if I could do this, if this would be all right with the board, can we recess, and I'll get you the answer, and then come back up a little bit farther down your agenda? And we put it to bed?
Sure.
That'd be all right with you fellows?
Make a motion to recess this Harmony Hills item.
Let me chase it down for you.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
Is there any corrections on that, Heather?
Corrections here. So can we just make a motion to approve these, enter these changes into the record?
Yes.
I make a motion with the changes that have been presented into the record.
I agree that we need to amend the changes into the into the document as stated, and it has our circuit that.
First and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Next order of business is our county administrator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The first item under my business is actually Bobby and I both applied that to the agenda, so I'll let him speak on that when it's his turn. So going to the consent agenda, we have the county auditor claims, claims voucher report dates seven twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two through eight, nine, twenty-twenty-two, barrel voucher from eight, one, twenty-twenty-two. We have the clerk's monthly report for June of twenty-twenty-two, a request for road closure for Larry's Automotive, and the consensus for the inside demo at the Warwick County Historic Jail. Just need a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve the county administrators' consent agenda.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Bobby, you want to address the Center Point contract?
Yes, we can. This is for the District One Highway slash stormwater facility, and this is to run three-phase electric to get it to the building for service. So on our service application and discussing with Center Point, I believe they came up with looking at how much electricity we generate over a six-year period to come up with our refund amount. But the total, the total cost to run the electricity to us was forty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents, less a credit of twenty-four thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and nineteen cents, for a total of nineteen thousand twenty-six dollars and one penny. And so I just ask that we approve that contract so we can get electrical service to that facility.
Is this just for electrical?
This is just to run the electrical service to the facility.
To the building?
To the buildings.
Get the three-phase, yeah.
Yeah.
Bobby, is that a minimum usage? And if so, over what period of time?
This is over a six-year period of time, I believe, is how they they did that, and they used it based off of what we said the facility will have running in it.
And if we don't.
Hoping to be more.
And if we don't use that electricity, are we billed on a prorata basis?
If we don't use that amount?
Yes, if we don't, in other words.
If we go in less.
If we put solar on there, we're not using electricity, what happens?
My understanding is that this would still stay the costs that they estimated to install it, is the way she talked to me when we we discussed it. So I could I could wait and see what we use and then end up maybe having to pay them more, or I could use their advanced lump sum credit to get it down to this price. And she acted like even if it changed after this six-year period, that that is our credit. If someone else would happen to tap in, then we could get a payback on it in that six-year time period, I think, or five-year time period.
So it sounds like it's based on estimated credit online.
Yes. If we did it based off of actual use over a six-year timeframe, then if we use less energy than what they estimated here, we'd have to pay more.
Okay.
What's your alternative there? You really don't have one.
This is no, yeah, there's no, if we want electrical service.
Windmill.
We tried.
I make a motion to approve the Center Point contract for three-phase service extension.
I'll second.
First and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you all for, Jim Morley, junior, thank you all for accommodating me on the Harmony Hills item. I was pretty sure that Jordan would be okay with that, but I wanted to ask before obligated him for thirty-nine thousand dollars. People are like that, you know, they're funny. He said he would be fine with that. He did ask, and this would make sense to me, if we could set it up, we had to for it to be based on once there are so many houses out there or something, because if things sits and nobody ever builds out there, then there's not a need for the dust control.
What about what about getting halfway halfway or three-fourths or?
We'll have to do it with however many lots are recorded with the secondary. That's what's going to have to trigger it. How many lots are you going to record at a time?
So how about before we can, so there's fifty-seven lots, right?
Yes.
And so half of fifty-seven be twenty-eight. How about when we record the twenty-ninth lot? He has to, you want you want to check for thirty-nine thousand and at the county.
Yeah, here we go into the road donation fund for Wesley and Esq. Roads.
How would it go?
They would bring a check in when they file your secondary for the road donation fund for Wesley and Esq. Roads.
The twenty-ninth lot?
If that's the board's discretion.
They can do phase one with twenty-eight lots, and we're not going to have the thirty-nine thousand.
Right.
As soon as we record any phase two, the additional lot.
And the general ideal there is that they're kind of higher up on the hill than the road, so hopefully the dust would dissipate. But once you come back over the hill, you're down level with the road again. So I'm willing to agree to half the lots.
Okay.
And if I tell, if I tell it with you all, I mean, I.
Well, it's pretty simple. How do you feel about asphalt?
If you thought I got in trouble, I'd get in trouble for thirty-nine, I'd really get in trouble for asphalt.
I'll entertain a motion.
I wish I could remember it.
I make a motion to approve the PP twenty-two thirteen Harmony Hills, and with the recording of the twenty-nine lot sold, it will trigger the double chip and seal for, what road is it, Bobby?
Esq. and Wesley Roads.
Esq. and Wesley Roads.
I'll second that motion.
You want, is it thirty-nine thousand? Is that correct, Bobby? The cost.
Current cost?
It is today.
Where they're turning, I just want that it's half the cost or whatever that is.
Just say half, half, half the cost.
Half the cost.
Donated to the road. And that is a fluctuating, like if the cost goes up and this takes ten years, would that something you'll really be correct?
It just needs to say half the cost.
Half the cost.
Cost could go down.
Whoever's here, ten years, you know.
Most prices are.
Okay, very good. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thanks, everybody.
Next order of business is our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the agenda is the Mark Parks Master Plan. This was ARPA-funded master plan development. There's a contract between American Structure Point and the county commissioners to develop that master plan, which would need to be concluded by the end of 2022, and is for forty-seven thousand dollars. Contract has been reviewed and is in order as long as it's completed by the end of the year.
I entertain a motion to approve the Parks Master Plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
The second item on the calendar is actually says jail committee engagement agreement, sample calendar. I have, I have it down for you, actually. You've got these agreement, engagement letter from Barnes and Thornburg, who would serve as bond counsel, general bond counsel. Of course, we would serve as local bond counsel under the, under our engagement agreement with the county. So that engagement letter from Barnes and Thornburg is pretty standard, is similar to prior engagement letters from Barnes and Thornburg for previous bonds that have been done with the county. Brad Bingham is the local contact with Barnes and Thornburg. We've worked with him lots of times. He's very, very helpful and knowledgeable, will help us walk through the bond issuance portion of that project. The other item that he sent is just a sample calendar for financing, which can be adjusted, of course, as we go through the project, but it's just to give an idea as to how long that process might take if it were to start at any given date, which right now is kind of looking at mid-September, but that could be adjusted. So I would ask for your approval of Barnes and Thornburg's engagement letter for general bond counsel and the financing calendar we're still working through.
Still moved?
And adjustments can be made to this. This is not obligating this. This is just.
Correct. It's just a sample.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor. My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. I do have two other items that were mentioned. One is county clerk clerk's office or request for media conversion that was sent a couple few weeks ago, and it asked for some funds, twenty-four thousand dollars, to convert some marriage licenses that are all on paper to a digital format. We did review that contract. It is with Fidler, who the county has used in other departments as well. And we did ask for one change. They asked for an upfront amount, and we said we're not paying any upfront amounts, and they said, okay, we'll take that out. So that is the only change that was made to the agreement, but otherwise it's ready to go.
Mrs. Perry, do you have any commentary on your contract?
Patty Perry, Warwick County Clerk. Heather just told me to come over here and answer any questions John might have.
Got it.
Any questions? I can, just a little background, we're going to be scanning approximately fifty of our marriage books that date back to early eighteen hundreds. Once they're scanned, they'll roll it into software. We will then download that software. When people call in and they need copies of their marriage license, the ladies will be able to do it from their computers, and will be able to discard the marriage books or donate them to the museum.
Good question.
Sure.
Where, where all do this, does this go? Does it, we keep it? I just want to make sure it's all safe. It's not just going to be on computers. Is it going to the cloud, backups?
I assume it would go to the cloud as well. I'd have to talk to Guy on that.
Now, we can put it there, but then also another question that Commissioner Saylor found today was that there's a standard fee of, what, twenty-nine thousand, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
And then there's an item in the contract that states that they charge an extra dollar per page for something beyond that. I wanted some explanation on that, please.
That's it. They index it, and they're not going to index it. All they're going to do is scan it. We in turn will index it.
Okay.
The ladies in our office.
Okay. How many documents do you think there are, Patty?
Well, between fifty and sixty books. I don't know if you've ever been in our back room. I'd say there's probably five hundred pages or more in each book. Each, I should have brought a sample. Each book has, of course, you know, the books are this big, yadick. You have the bride's name on one side, the groom's name on the other side, along with all their information, date of birth, the bridesmaid's name.
I guess that was my question. What's what's a document? Because I believe it says one dollar per document, right? Is that, is a book a document or is a page?
I don't think it's a scan.
It said for page.
Yeah, I think it. I think it says, it says, I mean, I have.
Indexing now.
Did Jimmy more copies of that with you? No, no, I'm not with you. No.
No, just mine.
Just, can I see that for a second?
That's just for indexing.
Just for indexing.
So indexing would would mean each document. I would, I have this way, I'm taking it. But but we're not doing that.
Twenty-four thousand covers, scan, capture, crop, order removal of the images, and then this book and page location index. So are they, it's nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, and then the project management support or import is twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, so that they're just, they're just telling you what, what, they're going to create an index for what book that document's in and what page.
Yes, sir.
So that's what that nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, that would make sense. Because because I was going to ask you if there's, you know, thousands of documents, could we do that internally? But it sounds like we're going to be indexing internally, so that's going to save save some costs. I guess that was my.
The front, twenty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and seven cents is on the same page, Dan, above indexing. This matches up with just this scanned marriage records pricing.
Right, that's what I'm looking at right there.
So these must have been options that could have done, but chose not to.
Patty, is that the final cost? Nothing attached to it for like software packages or upkeep or maintenance?
No, sir.
So, so how, so how is a person going to index that? There has to be a program involved.
There will be.
Okay, so.
Software.
So is that Apex program and is that part of the cost then?
It is, it's not an additional cost. The, I would like to add that Kim Kelly, my chief deputy, she has worked with Fiddler. She has a lot of confidence in them. And they also did a lot of work in the recorder's office, which is how she made contact. And she was very pleased with their work product.
So, so Patty, just so I'm clear, and, and I just wanna make sure we're, we're clear. I'm clear, we're clear. So it says here on the Apex program, which I, I'm assuming you're gonna be utilizing the Apex program.
Which page are you, like?
Page four. Page four, it says software annual payments of seventy-five hundred. So I just wanna make you aware that I'm reading that as, you know, that's gonna be in your budget, an additional seventy-five hundred. And then services, initial one-time payment of three thousand. So there's, there's an annual cost of seventy-five hundred dollars here. I guess the question, well, if somebody retrieves one of those records, is there, do they have to pay for that like they do in the recorder's office?
No.
There's no cost for that?
Now, they will pay for the cost for us to print the document off. And if they want it certified, they'll pay for it.
So there's a way to get this seventy-five hundred dollar cost back?
Yes.
Okay, recoup, I should say.
Yes.
Okay, some of that cost. Cause obviously that's being done for convenience.
Correct.
And so, okay.
And they're big books, the ladies can hardly, they're very difficult to maneuver. We would eventually like to get all of our books scanned. Be seen on the books.
So I I guess Andrew, I mean I just don't like having this in here. I mean, I'd rather have it being struck from the agreement. If, if it's not gonna be there, in other words, I don't want forty dot, forty thousand document scanned and we get a bill for forty thousand dollars. You know what I mean?
It is a little confusing whether or not.
Exactly.
The front first agreement, page five, shows total investment of twenty-four thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars, seven cents.
Right, but then it goes back here.
You look at it.
Seven, seven thousand dollars annual.
Is that included or is that separate, along with this condor indexing?
But see, this is, this is the program. That's the program part of it, this is the, this is the scan, capture, imaging process, this is all the labor of doing all that. And then this is the ongoing, this is, this is the operating program, right? Is that what?
It appears so.
I, I just wanna make sure we know what we're agreeing to, that's all.
You know, I, I, I'm gonna bring up, I, I know that we sent it to our county attorney for review and I thought that we were okay with it, but maybe we ought to table it, let the county attorney review it before we go any farther with it.
Terms of the contract are fine, I guess we just need to know what's, what is being paid.
Yeah, I, and, and that's all, Patty, I just wanted to make sure that, hey, we were agreeing to a contract for twenty-four thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and seven cents. And then understanding that we also are agreeing to a seventy-five hundred dollar annual payment for the program. So you're doing, you're doing the scan and capture, which is gonna be twenty-four twenty-four thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and seven cents. And then it looks like cause that, that's the figure that's up here, then it looks like if you're gonna take advantage of their program, then it's gonna be an annual payment of seventy-five hundred. I would think that would start the, the first day of the next year, whatever that is, I mean, calendar, you know, twelve months from now.
Yep.
Right? Or is it prorated, that I don't know. And then the one-time payment of, of the three thousand dollars, the installation and configuration of Apex, workflow analyst, project management services and training on the use of Apex. So I, I take that if somebody's gonna come into your office and maybe train your chief deputy or someone. Okay, as, as long as you're I mean, everybody good with that? Cause we had some questions though.
Sure.
So I mean, I guess I'm speaking for the other two commissioners too.
Absolutely.
Bob, you feel, feel good with it?
Are you wanting to go back and verify these pricings?
I would like to.
Yeah, I just, I just don't wanna leave that open up. I, that, that needs to be, either we got documents, if we're not taking advantage of that, then I want it struck from the agreement.
Or change the, change the agreement to suit us.
Well, yeah, strike it. Or saying, or saying this has to be approved by the, by the clerk. You know, just don't leave that open. You know, I mean, I mean, how many documents are there? Could be fifty thousand, you can check for fifty thousand dollars and we don't have any recourse, right?
Yeah. Yeah, no, we need to find out about this. Why don't we, since it's a pricing term, which is an essential part of this contract, let's get that ironed out before we
Sure.
Make a motion.
So you wanna table it?
Yep.
To the twenty-second?
And Andrew, which page are you referring to, so I can circle in?
Two different staple parts here. The second part that is only four, only five pages long. Page four of it. On the front, it says official records proposal.
Mine doesn't say that.
We got this. Trying to figure out these three parts here.
My contract doesn't say that, so.
This was their proposal, it looks like this is the mediation, we need a conversion agreement. So is that do they take all that out? Here, they got, talk about condor indexing, but nothing's checked.
Right.
I, I make a motion to table to the, our August twenty-second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Patty.
No, thank you.
The last item, just wanna bring to your attention, was Alpha Laser adding a copy machine with the Parks Department. That would be added to your master contract with Alpha Laser, but it does come with a, every copier comes with its own individual lease agreement. And so this lease agreement, just like all the other copy machines and would be in order for your signature today, if you wanted to add that copier to your master contract with Alpha Laser.
Make a motion to approve the Alpha Laser agreement for the Parks Department.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That's all I have, Mr. S.
Thank you. Next order of business is our county engineer, highway superintendent.
Yes, the first item we already covered, so the second item I have is a little earlier in the year, a couple of vehicles were declared emergency vehicle designation. And it was stated for, they were used in emergency situations, such as tornadoes, straight line wind damage, high water conditions, cutting and moving trees. And that's all, everything that the highway department vehicles do. So I also have requested these five vehicles for the engineers, assistant engineer and the three foremen to be approved and request the letter for activation of emergency vehicle designations as well.
Well, I know when strong winds came through the other day, they were calling our highway department pretty quick, so. And I've actually helped them out on frame road a little bit, so they're, they're definitely out in emergencies, so.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion, yeah, sure.
Second.
I have a first and a second, I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here, next order of business is county grants development department, ARPA. Chair of receivers filling in for Debbie Bennett Stiersman this evening.
Chair of receivers, acquisition administrator, I'm filling in for Debbie Bennett Stiersman this evening. Just an update, pardon me, on the ARPA. We're continuing to take applications through September the second, twenty twenty-two. And once those are in, then the core group will meet again for review. As of today, we've received one county and six competitive. One thing that was left off of the last meeting was this is not a new application, this was for whatever reason was mistakenly left out of the last meeting and it is the competitive application that Boonville Now had put in for the gazebo for eighty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents to be placed on the historic courthouse lawn. And the core group did approve it to move on to the commissioners. The gazebo will be much like the gazebo at Johnson Park. I believe the gazebo at Johnson Park is twenty by twenty. This particular gazebo would be sixteen by sixteen, so just a little bit smaller, but it will have a nine-foot ceiling. So that'll be a little bit higher than what is currently at Johnson Park. And it will be all custom-made and I think the commissioners have all seen the diagrams of it.
So Sherri, a little bit, just, I guess for the audience and people online. You know, we, this is something that's not new, that we've, we've been looking at something like this for the past several years. We've tried to get corporate people to sign up to pay this, pay for this, to build this for us and with, with no avail. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, some grant money being used for this and in Boonville Now taking taking this on and, and, and doing, cause I think it'll be a great addition for the community and the this is a high-traffic area where a lot of people come to this building and to see the war memorial and that kind of thing. And it'll give people just a place to, to sit and enjoy the property.
That is correct, Commissioner Saylor. And actually, this really kind of goes back, I did quite a bit of research on it. And it actually goes back to whenever Pam Hendrickson was in office, when we did that downtown revitalization plan. And almost everything on that plan has been completed. And, and this would complete that entire project for the revitalization of downtown Boonville.
That's pretty interesting.
Yeah. Great collaboration. I'll entertain a motion.
So are we approving the whole thing or just the, the?
The entire amount of eighty-four thousand nine seventy-nine fifty.
Okay, just not, not everything.
Everything else has been approved, this just mistakenly got left off at the last meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm so dense today, been a long meeting day. I make a motion to approve the Boonville Now gazebo for eighty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, anything for discussion? I have one thing.
I have nothing.
Counsel, I have three claims for contractual payments here from our health department that are not on our consent agenda set of claims. So in the interest of getting these folks paid, what do we need to do?
These are independent contractor monthly. The county's contractually obligated to pay them. Do you know why they're not on the list, just because they're missing a document or what?
Says itemized receipt not attached to all three. I don't know what your definition of itemized is, but.
I'm not sure what the yeah, I don't know what the reason, looks like there's days and hours, but in terms of your question, I think it's a motion to pay these despite not having certified yet. They are contractually, the county's contractually obligated to pay these services as long as, if they've been provided. And if the health department officer says they've been provided.
I'll make a motion to pay the people.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Anything else?
Nope.
One more motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
That was three claims, right?
That's been signed, Barnes and Thornburg, still need Alpha Laser.